All right, let's call this meeting to order, please. It is 7:00. And we've moved the flag up front. If you'll please join me in the flag for legal.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk, will you give us a roll call?
Yes, ma'am. I think you might delight welcome in there. There you go. You're good.
So we have John.
Here.
Lori.
Here.
Rudy.
Here.
Sue.
Here.
And Laura.
Here.
Before we get rolling here, I'd like to ask if I might, I would like to request to make a comment from the boards. May I have that permission? Yeah, thank you. Couple things. We ran for these positions, supervisor, clerk, treasurer, trustees, to try to bring our community together. We intend to work for the community, sometimes with none of our own interests at heart, which is conflicting, maybe conflicting at times. Our job is not to disparage any previous board, any previous board member, committee member. Our training has been somewhat on the fly, little to no formal training in the way of transition. Tomorrow, we are all attending the new officials training hosted by Michigan Township Association, or MTA. And we have all purchased or have access to what's called the Red Bible. We refer to it daily. It is very much a guide for us in our positions as we enter this new era for ourselves. We will strive to abide by all the laws and policy that govern our actions. The MSP, Michigan State Police, has received multiple complaints already. This entire board is, has been, is, and has been very forthcoming and participating in the investigative process. As we settle into our new positions, gain some training, and get a few board meetings under our belt, some things may change. A couple of reminders. Agendas, which are here on the table for you, for us, they're a guide for the meeting. This is a business meeting. It helps us stay on track. We believe any changes we make to how the meetings will be run will be in accordance with the community being more informed. What we know, we will share with you. If individuals have issues, concerns, suggestions, I encourage you to please reach out. We are staffed, we are fortunate to be staffed Monday through Friday, 9 to 4 and longer. Come by, the door is open. Make an appointment or just stop in. We're here to listen. Thank you. Thank you, Board. Okay. Board Member Conflict of Interest Statement. None? Okay. Very good. Public Comment on Agenda Items. If you have any comment, please feel free to step to the podium. No, I don't see any hands. Okay. Approval of Meeting Agenda. I have some corrections. The first correction I'd like to bring to the attention is, in the December, on the, at the December 10th meeting, I missed this item, the public comment on agenda items. That was my mistake. I didn't use the agenda. I used my notes, which is why we now have an agenda that I use. It was my mistake. If our clerk will please, when we correct the minutes, we will line that out. Okay? Item I on the minutes from December.
Are we on the agenda? Are we on the minutes?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah. I'm sorry. So, let me back up. Thank you, Sue. Approval of Meeting Agenda. Are there changes to the agenda?
I'd like to make an addition under New Business.
Okay.
I'd like to add a Section F. Motion for Board to Complete Attorney Contract bid. That was discussed last meeting, regards to more temporary attorney position. Set bid, excuse me, set bid deadline for a reasonable amount of time to receive bids and create a supplement criteria sheet for, for legal.
Okay. So we have, okay, so that's Item F. Okay, so that's an addition to our agenda. Under New Business, Item F. Request for Bid for Legal.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition.
I'll second that. Discussion? When you're ready. Are you ready? Do you want to roll call vote?
No.
No. Okay. Approval of the previous minutes.
Are we all on previous?
Yes. Yes, we made a motion on the table. Thank you. So the motion on the table is, we want to amend the meeting agenda, adding Item F. And there doesn't seem to be any discussion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Approval of Previous Minutes. I have some corrections.
That's right.
Okay. I was trying to use an agenda, the December 10th meeting, I was trying to use the agenda and minute and notes for myself, and I missed the public comment on agenda items. So, we need to correct that in the December 10th meeting, lining out Item 6. Whenever you're ready, I have more. Okay. More, more. Correct Item I, which is under New Business. It's just a name correction, spelling typo. I meet and hunt contract for the bio solids bid. It's, the name of the business is biotech agronomics, A-G-R-O-N-O-M-I-C-S. And we have an extra word in that statement. It says, motion made by Smith, supported by Decker, to approve the contract biotech agronomics to remove our solid waste once a year, yea. So we need to delete the yea. Okay. Yeah. So those are the corrections I have. Any other corrections to the previous December 10th?
I do. Item J, it's the meet and hunt contract for water services. The minutes state tabled, and they should say, they should say tabled pending legal review. So that'll be corrected. And also Item G, after sewer treatment plan, I need to add provides operation for the wastewater treatment plant and collection system. The increase was $300 a month.
Will you repeat that, please?
It's Item G in the minute after where it says sewer treatment plan. I need to add provides operation for the wastewater treatment plant and collection system.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
That's all I got for that.
Whenever you're ready, Laura, I've got another question.
Okay.
I was discussing, I don't know what line item number it was, to reflect, there's a motion to reflect four-month pause on all commercial rehab district applications, and I did not see that in the era prior meeting minutes.
This one, right? Five?
So that was on the commercial rehab district, a four-month moratorium? Yeah, okay. Add that.
I'll clear it, it's right there.
Was it, I don't know.
Yep, you're right, Isabelle.
So it'd be Section F.
Well, that's the resolution for the application, but I think what you're referring to. We put a pause on it to create criteria. Yes, you're correct. Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
No, I don't.
No? Okay. Okay. So, with those corrections, we need a motion to approve the December 10th, 2024.
I move to, I move that we approve the December 10th, I can talk frankly, the December 10th, 2024 meeting minutes.
With the changes.
With the corrections, with the corrections as discussed here.
Okay. So we have a motion. Did you get that then? Okay. All in favor? I'm sorry, support?
I'll second it.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Reports. Oh, I, I should have asked. Can we move Stephen Corporon up? He's come here from Charlevoix. And he's just going to give us a brief synopsis of what's happening with our sewer system. So, is that okay if we just move him up?
Let's see.
All right. Okay. Stephen, do, will you please? Thank you. For those that don't know, this is Stephen Corporon. He's our field engineer from Performance Engineers. He's our boots-on-the-ground guy.
Thank you. One condition though, just please, Steve, you keep saying Stephen. My mom was the only one who used Stephen, and that was only if I was in a little bit of trouble. If she threw my middle name, it was a minimum amount of trouble, and all three names, I was in big trouble, so.
Stephen is.
All right, thank you. Just a quick update on how we're going on the ground right now. The wastewater plant itself, they are still working on the concrete for the tanks and the, and the, and the equipment. The, they got the whole base poured, that was a couple months ago. Last month, we got the first of the four wall sections poured, and now they're tying rebar on the next section. And that part has slowed down a little bit with the cold weather. Even with gloves on, insulated gloves, the guys tying all this rebar. It's not a job I would want, but they're creeping along. We're on schedule, though, to be, for completion of that by the end of June. Don't know exactly when they'll have it operational. The equipment should be delivered in late end of March. Hopefully, we'll start seeing the equipment going in sometime in April. So that's where we're going on the plant right now. Phase one, the gravity section, Elmer's has been working on that. They are ahead of schedule. In fact, they came this close to have all their pipe in the ground before they shut down for the winter, and that dream ended today. So, there's this one section of pipe that needs to be drilled to connect the new system to the, to the existing system underneath Arthur and Floyd. And it just got too cold, and they're still waiting on their biggest drill to get in here, and they, they pulled the plug today. They'll do that, they'll do that in a couple of months when things, when the frost laws come off and we can get that. They'll be, in the spring, they'll be tuning things up, getting the restoration work done, getting the road, the roads that were opened up tuned up and paved as soon as they can get ready, on Reith Riley's schedule first thing. Matt's Underground, who's doing the pressure system north of the bridge over in the Columbus Beach Club and down Prospect, or South Prospect, they're on schedule. They're about where we thought they'd be, and they're still kind of poking along, but they're going to get frozen out here pretty soon, too, I think. But they've been working up in the Columbus Beach Club. The Phase Two contractor, that, one contractor has both the gravity and the pressure sewer system. We're meeting with them to get their scheduling pinned down. We're meeting with them on February 20th, and then we'll have a better idea of when. Generally, they said they're going to start the gravity section in May, and then the pressure sewers down by the Barber and Avenue and Sturgeon Island in August, but we don't know what their sequencing is yet. If they're going to start on the MAC end, on the gravity or on the Barber end, we don't know that yet. But their plan is to be done this year as well, by the end of the year. We don't know if that's going to happen or not. We'll have to see how things go this summer. That's how those, those are going right now. So that's a status update. On tonight, you have the three pay requests for those three contracts, and there's also two change orders, one for Matt's and one's for Elmer's. If you have any questions on those, I could answer now, it'd be great. The Lake Effects snow bands have been following me around. They've been all at night at my house in Charlevoix last night, and then they followed me to Mansalona, where I got hit by one all day there, and then I ran out of it in Gaylord on the way up here tonight, so I'm hoping I didn't bring one up here for you guys tonight. But I'd like to, I'd like to head on back home here. If you have any specific questions, especially on the change orders, I'll field them now, if that's all right.
Do you want to just give a brief overview of those change orders? I, I think you can.
I can, it's pretty simple.
Yeah.
One of them is for bollards for both contractors. The bollards are just basically a steel pipe full of concrete that protects stuff, so we're trying to protect the lift stations. Our standard design on our plans show one bollard. And seeing how, especially on, you know, raceboat weekend and that, the people parked everywhere around here, I'm, we're thinking we're going to probably need one or two more for each one of these lift stations. So I priced it out as an estimate on two, two more for each lift station, but I don't know if we're going to use two more on each lift station. We asked each contractor to give us their bids. Their bids are close to each other, but not exactly the same. If they're exactly the same, I'd be concerned if these guys were colluding on their bidding and that, but that's what those are, and it's not a lot of money. The other one, there was some discrepancies on how the plans read on the size of the structures, the lift stations, the clean outs, the air releases and that. Everything was supposed to be five foot in diameter, and when, they both used the same supplier, but when, when their submittals came through, some of them came through as four footers, and we missed that, that we approved the four footer. They needed to be five footers, so this is the, the cost difference for having them, you know, use a five footer instead of a four footer for those. And the prices are a little bit different. One, we have to cut the hatches out, or they have to cut the hatches out of a couple of the lids and put those in. One contractor broke those out as a separate line item, the other one rolled that into their, their price increase, so if you add everything up, they're about the same, but they're not identically the same. But neither one's a lot. Our contingency is looking pretty good. And this was the other thing I was going to tell you when I met earlier with you, and I forgot. I've done a, a load test on the, on the pay items going, you know, especially with Elmer's and Matt's, going out, what we know is already done, what we know has to be done yet, what my estimate is on that. And then we do a closeout change order at the end, because, you know, we had, well, we did more of this, less of this, more of this, less of this, and then it all balances out. I've done that load test, and we're looking all right.
Okay.
You know, neither one, we're not going to blow anything up, as far, as far as I can see.
Okay.
This is, this would be the first, these two would be the first draw on the, on the contingency.
It's the first one from Matt's, or from Elmer's, and it's the second one for Matt's. We did one earlier on Matt's. We had to put in some sidewalk replacement over in Columbus Beach Club because the laterals are going to the property lines, which are going through some sidewalks that I missed when I was doing my estimate. So we're going to owe them for that, whatever it is. It's not a ton of money. And, oh, pulverization. We did not account for pulverizing the pavement over there in the gravity sections, and so that wasn't a ton of money either, but that's, that was in their first change order. One thing I didn't do in previous jobs, I can walk, you know, I can get ahead of you and say, and say, well, if you put this agenda item on first, and this one on second, and this one on third, then I can walk you through each one, how the, the contingency is going to go down between this item and that item and that item. I didn't do that on these. I just tell you what the contingency is, what, what they, it's going to be dropping here, and you can, you can look at it and do the math, but you'd, you'd have to put them on the agenda exactly the way I thought about in doing it, so I didn't do it that way. But also, it's, we're not talking a lot of money, it's not going to be coming close to, to run out your contingency, so I didn't do that. If you want me to do it that way in the future, I can, it's just a little more. Okay.
All right.
Any, any other questions for Steve?
I just have one, one more with, when you were saying you're online, is there any possibility it's going to come a little under so that we don't have, we can get some of this contingency back?
Oh, yeah, I'm predicting that you're not going to run out your contingency.
I know.
So. But I don't want to put a figure on it.
I know. I, I'm just concerned because I believe the contingency with monies that we were waiting to get back from USDA at the end, that they were holding some of our money. Am I correct? So I was just hoping that maybe the other bid items were going to, you know, maybe be a little bit less so that.
Well, I could tell you, the two biggest drivers on it right now were, one, we factored in a lot of dewatering, based on our, our borings and what we thought the water table was, when we, when we did the borings and that. It was so dry in August and September that the water table was so far down, we hardly spent any money on dewatering in the gravity contract over here. I was astounded that we didn't have to dewater down at Devo Beach or at Constance and Arthur. That just blew me away. However, the, the quality of the soils in the roads for most of the gravity phase sucked. The morrow was, was, the morrow was up, we thought it was deeper, it was not, and, and so we paid a lot more to undercut and bring in stuff. Now fortunately, we were able to bring in sand from the pit, so that, that helped a lot. But those two numbers alone were huge, one in the good direction, one in the bad direction. And the bad direction was bigger than the good direction, but it's still, you're not, we're not going to bankrupt your contingency. But those are the two drivers.
Okay. And any, thanks, Sue. Any other questions? No? Okay. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Safe trip. Safe trip home. Okay. And bills.
I need to make a change to the bills, an amendment.
No, I think you're right.
An amendment to the bills. I need to add the check to the fire department. And the amount is 1,087, eight, 1,086.
No.
Can I just take a nap?
Okay.
Thank you, that's a little better.
I can like that one better.
So tight.
$1.86.
We're out of here.
So are, are, how are we on our, do we need a motion on that, Sue? To add that? No? Yeah?
Well, then, yeah, if you're going to have it separate, then yeah, to, you know, motion to pay the bills.
To pay that bill. Or add, to pay the bill. Any other questions on the bills?
Just a comment, that was fun. To collect that money, give it to you guys.
That's the first, I will say.
What?
No, I said.
All right. Okay. So we need a motion to pay the bills and accept the addition of the fire department payment. Do we have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
And support?
I can support that.
Very good. And are you ready, ma'am? And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Treasurers' Report.
That's right. This is the hard part.
Want me to turn this for you?
No. Give me a break. No, you weren't selected. We did this yesterday, and it worked just fine.
Do you need to be closer?
I probably need to be ahead of you. I can see it just fine. Come on, I've been out of teaching for what, six months? I had to do a PowerPoint. Recover. There we go. And then this is different. Can't remember, it's not that nice.
Stay awesome, huh?
Yeah, anyway. So, I want to start with, as we know from the last meeting, pub, two-thirds of special assessments sewer phase two did not get the special assessment put on their tax bills for December. And there also were three people in sewer phase one that did not get their special assessment added. So, border review, Met, approved all those additions, and we got them all on the bills and reprinted on the 26th, and got those new bills all mailed out, answering questions that people had, you know, I already paid my first part, just pay the difference, so that was nice. And then just yesterday, after all the border review changes, I balanced with Chippewa County, so our tax roll matches the county's tax roll, so we're looking good. All right, the next thing I want to talk about is the tax checking account, and some of you probably know this, and some maybe don't, but I just wanted to, for anybody who's watching at home or watches this later, all, we have a checking account that's just for taxes. All the tax money goes into that checking account, and then every two weeks, I disburse, that's what the law says I do. I can disburse more often if I want, and I have, but at least every two weeks. And so far, since December 1st, we have collected and dispersed, well, we have collected almost 3.3 million. Now, the township, meaning the fire, the police, the streetlights, the library, and the township, we only keep about 30% of any monies that we collect. The rest goes out to county, the school, and then the township, which then gets dispersed, as you saw tonight, the check to the fire department. So, we're doing good, but as we know, all of our money comes in on this December tax bill, because during the summer, everything goes up to the county. So this is where we have to get it all in. Now, what I wanted to show was, someone heard or someone brought up the fact that when we got into office in November, there wasn't a lot of money in the pool checking account. So taxes, just taxes, and then we dispersed it to everybody, and that was in the pool account, which is one checking account that everybody, library, police, we all have the same checkbook with their different funding, you know, like sewers 590 and so, but it's all in one. So when we got here, we saw, so 2003 is the blue, so this is kind of, you see trends now, of course, because we collected the money, now we're spending it. we're spending it. And but when we got here, it was to here. So we said, "Don't spend. Bare minimum. Don't get anything extra until we can figure out what's going on." We knew, and I believe the previous board knew, that come December 1, we had Navinoy's assessment, we had sewer one assessment, we had sewer two assessment. We still had a little bit of Wabi and Chippewa. So I believe they knew the money was gonna come in, so they were fine. And they did a lot of things during the course of that downtrod down. When you first look at it, you go, "Huh." But then as you start digging into the numbers, I mean, the police up the retirement fund, 277,000 to put into the police retirement. The streetscape, all the lights were put in, we had to pay consumers, we got a truck for the parks, the sewer plant expansion, some, we had to put in some money to start with, and then all the sewer systems, and then, of course, paving Navinoy's. So you can see, I mean, it was all great projects, but it did make for a little scary when we first got here. But I had planned to tell you what the bank balances were because previous boards always put the bank balance, there's a report in that first part, and it says how much is in the pool account, how much is in, well, think of this as your check register at home, and you've been depositing money and writing checks out of it, and nobody bothered to record any of that in the register. So whatever's on that report is not accurate to what's really in the bank. And I'm not gonna give you a report that's not accurate just because you're used to always getting it. And maybe no one looks at it, but I'm not gonna put up misleading information. So I planned to pull all those dollar amounts, but the sewer medium ran a little long. So from my memory, pool is up to 1.1 million and tax is at 2.3 million. And those are the two that I was looking at. And we have, you know, other, the library has some of their own special accounts, but those were the two that, on that slide, it didn't look good, but they're looking good now. So no worries.
If I can, just chip in on that. Once the audit is done, there will be some adjustments made as well. Because, and that's where some of the numbers are not correct, if I may say, is because it's still sitting in the tax account from last year. So as soon as the audit is done, we know what adjustments need to be made. That will help a lot of the corrections to, so that the journal is showing accurately.
And if you have any questions, or something that you wanna know about before the next meeting, you're curious about, just let me know. I'll whip up another boring PowerPoint or do something. But I am open to whatever you wanna know about. I'm willing to share. You just have to let me know and I can get that for you. So, or stop by and chit chat. Usually I have popcorn from Pegg's too, in case you're interested.
Best customers.
Okay. I don't think there's any motion need to be done to accept that, or do we need to make a motion to accept that? Yeah? Okay. So we have a treasurer's report. We need a motion, please, to accept the treasurer's report.
I'll make that motion.
And support?
I'll support it.
And all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, enny? Motion passes. Very good. Correspondence. We did get two letters this month. Well, we received an email. That's, I consider that correspondence, from Mr. Jakeway, asking for a letter of support for his project. The letter is to accompany his application to the MEDC for the, another grant program. It would be to help him with gap funding. And the other bit of correspondence is a letter from the Indian River Area Library Board of Trustees. They were stating their position on wanting their funds removed from the pool account. And that's the correspondence that we have. Okay. And next item, we've done the sewer under reports. Airport. Is Doug Schofield here? No. Okay. Okay. So the airport report is that they've had a pipe burst out there in their terminal. There's a bathroom. They are monitoring, they do a walkabout, and they found that a pipe was burst and there was water and ice everywhere. We have contacted the insurance carrier. They are in the process of cleaning it up and we're looking at some bits. So that's the airport report. DDA, Mr. Nivell?
You want me up here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I hate to call people here. So the streetscape, we are still, as you know, we're still working on the poles on the east side. Power is now done. We have, I talked to Consumers Power and the last electrician that we have. They're trying to schedule everything for, in the next two weeks to get, then all the poles will be done on that east side. Then we have concrete work in the spring, as soon as the weather breaks. We have some concrete work to repair where the holes were. The other things that we have been talking about is possibly getting a pathway down from the school to Cooperation Park. The school is, I've been talking with the school, they are very interested in getting involved in that, and they are applying for a grant.
Oh, good.
So once we get that done, I think that our next step as a DDA board is to discuss going out for, getting a survey done on that. And we'll probably discuss that at our next meeting, which is next week.
Very good.
And that's it.
Very good. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Freedom of Information Act, we had no requests. And the Indian River Area Library, Kelsey Ruckowski, our director. Thank you, ma'am.
Hi. I'm Kelsey, the director of the Indian River Area Library. So I just have a few events that I wanted to share with everybody. We have a winter reading program that's going on right now. It ends January 31st on that Friday. You just need to pick up a program bookmark. I tailored it specifically so that people who work can still do it and not be overwhelmed. So I would really recommend actually trying it. The prize is something that I wish I had myself. So I think that it would be, it's just really exciting. And if you come in, I'll show you what it is, 'cause it's in already. And we do have a prize for children and a prize for adults. And honestly, I think the adult prize is better, but don't tell the kids. And so we also have a program coming up that I'm very excited about. It's our kitten cuddles program. So you can relax and enjoy some time playing, cuddling and interacting with adoptable kittens. In this program, it's gonna be held in our meeting room in the library. You got 15 minutes with them, but if there's nobody else in the time slot, you can have a little more time. And that is all provided by the Sheboygan County Human Society very generously. They're not like giving us the cats though. That's something that you can decide if you wanna have. So you can sign up for your 15-minute time slot on our website. It's for all ages, for anyone who needs to de-stress after the holidays and just enjoy some time with some sweet little kittens. We also have a Cookies and Coco Social, and that's Friday, January 31st, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. So you can snack on delicious bread of cookies, all home baked by different, very talented bakers in our community, and a hot cocoa bar. And so that's something that anyone can enjoy. Feel free to bring your own cookies if you'd like to share. You can sign up on our website to attend or you can come day of the event, space permitting, but I think we'll just invite everyone. And we also have a snowshoe hike that's coming in February. So that's February 11th at 1:00 p.m. The signup is on our website. You can join the library and Little Traverse Conservancy for a snowshoe hike. It's at the Seven Springs Nature Preserve, and that's where we'll be meeting. And you can bring the snowshoes if you have them, or you, if you can just let us know on the signup, and the Little Traverse Conservancy will provide them for you. So those are some upcoming events. And then we also, if you have or know of anyone who is homebound this winter season, the Friends of the Indian River Area Library does provide homebound delivery service. So we'd be willing to, they have drivers that will take the items to you. You don't have to pick out the items yourself. You could also just let us know genres or anything that you like, and we'll pick out the items and the drivers will take them to you. So that's something that's also on our website, where we do have paper forms at the library for anyone who's not comfortable using a computer. And also, our True Crime Podcast Club is coming back on January 23rd. So we paused for the winter months, but we're back. And the podcast's called The Dropout. It's really good. So if you need any help listening to podcasts, come in and we'll help teach you how to do that. And that's pretty much everything I've got.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. Very good. And our parks, Beth?
I'm more nervous here than I am sitting up there. Okay, hello. For those who don't know me, my name is Beth Henderson. I'm currently the chairperson for the Parks Commission. As of right now, we have four people on the board. Assistant co-chairperson is Gail Hall, secretary is Pat McGinnis, treasurer is Stacy Cole, and a youth representative is Andrew Cole. I would like to give you a little update on what we have been working on since we took office in November. First, we would like to thank the Women's Club for their generous donation for six new benches that will be placed down at Devo Beach, the purchase of the red snowflake banners. Unfortunately, we did not get the grant for the bathrooms down at Devo Beach. So we are in the process of applying and reapplying for grants. And if anyone has any suggestions or help, we could, you could come up with some funds that we would greatly appreciate. We are working on tweaking our policies and rental agreements. Another project we have to consider would be the repair slash replacement of the retaining wall. And we are in the process of completing a grant that we received from the Sheboygan County, and it was called Sheboygan County Youth Grant Through the AARP. The money was allocated for Cooperation Park. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth. Police report, chief?
So last month, on December 12th, the police department and some members from Tuscarawatch Township Fire Department participated with the Shop the Hero program. It was police fire EMS, and they took about 60 kids shopping for Christmas at Walmart in Sheboygan. So the other thing in December, first two weeks of December, we had an anonymous donor who donated 20 turkeys to our department. And for the first two weeks of December, instead of giving tickets, we were passing out turkeys. This is the second year we've done this. It's actually been very, very well-received in our community, and the officers really enjoy passing them out. So I'd like to say thank you to that anonymous donor. The other thing I have is our yearly stats for 2024. We handled 2,289 complaints. We made 42 bench warrant arrests, 78 misdemeanor arrests, 76 traffic arrests, 45 felony arrests, two juvenile arrests, gave 275 citations, 2,532 verbal warnings. We did write 13 ordinance violation and 17 snowmobile citations. Would you mind if I give an update on the building grant?
Please.
So we, Kelsey and I, I should say, have somehow got put in charge of the building grant. We had a little over $98,000 spent. We've gotten all the financial status reports done. All that money has now came back from the federal government. We have $101,000 more to spend. We're currently working on water softener for the building. And we are accepting bids for the construction project. That's primarily downstairs and some of it's in the library. And fire suppression. So we've already made the down payment for the fire suppression. They're supposed to be here sometime middle of February to end of February. Anavan Technology, to finish up the security cameras, they'll be in here on February 4th. White Pen's Electric finished up their electrical stuff yesterday, so we're definitely on track. I'm just waiting to get the construction bids in now.
Who was that here today working?
That was for the library.
Oh, okay.
I'll let Kelsey handle that one.
I was just curious. I thought it was Anavan.
Oh, no. That was Vector Tech. So they're here to do the tech upgrades on the building. So they're basically adding in a bunch of access points, and they are splitting out our internet so that we all get more bandwidth. So it should speed up everybody's internet. So, and they also moved the entire, all of the equipment that was in the electrical room, they put in the library. So we've got that in a more accessible place now. So this is day one of three. That's why my voice is a little dry, because they've been, the amount of dust that they've kicked up in there. But this is day one of three. Day two, they'll be doing some more cabling. And then day three is mainly when we'll get some internet spottiness, and that's because they'll be hooking everything up. But it's all good things. And I'm seeing, so it's all through E-Rate, and because of that, we have an 80% discount. It's normally like $23,000 at least for everything we're getting done. But we're only paying about $3,500 between the departments. And so I'm hoping to keep working with E-Rate to get more things like this, to keep updating our building with a much cheaper, like not nearly as expensive as it could be. So I think it'll be good. And they're great people, so I think we'll keep doing that.
Thank you. Thank you both for all your work on that. That was, that building grant paperwork was unbelievable. You both did a great job. But, so Kelsey, on Thursday, we should, we might experience some spotty internet as well. Okay.
Possibly Wednesday, but mostly Thursday.
Okay. And I think that is posted on the website, just in case you're in here. So, okay. Good deal. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for doing that. Okay. Old business. Tokyo Marine is our, they carry, hold our surety bond. And a claim was made against the surety bond through Tokyo Marine. The claim was that, well, let me back up. The workman's compensation, the way workman's compensation works, you're billed in advance based on the previous year's premium. And workman's comp is billed on payroll. So they bill you for your year. You go through your year. At the end of your coverage period, they want you to do a payroll audit. To help encourage you to do that, they give you 45 days. And if you don't do it, then they charge you a non-compliance fee. And it's quite steep because they want that data. They need it. And based on that data, then they balance bill you the difference in your workman's comp premium. So that's what happened. A claim was filed claiming that the non-compliance fee, which was $9,996, was a charge. And if we look in here, and yet, once the audit was completed, and it was, it was late, but it was completed, Accident Fund refunded of that $9,996. They refunded $7,522, the difference there being the additional premium due based on the actual payroll audit. Okay. We received a check from Tokyo Marine in the amount of $10,310.61. We reached out to inquire why. We were told it was a claim on the surety bond under a section of our coverage for clerk dishonesty. We reached out to Accident Fund and asked for an explanation list of our charges over the past, I believe, five years. And we received that. And then we had them confirm that they, and in that billing and transaction report, it shows that they refunded, oh, 7822, pardon me, excuse me. So we reached out to Tokyo Marine and said, "Hey, you know, what's going on here with this? We need to refund this money." And Tokyo Marine said, "Indeed, we were not made aware of the refund by Accident Fund to you." So in effect, the claim should never have been paid. So at this, and the documentation is in your board packet. So.
So do we just say we, we'll need to make a motion to pay that back?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And if you look at the email, I think there are two options there from Sharon Woods, our senior claim adjuster.
When I had Neil Hammerbocker in the office with me working when I first started, and he was made aware of that, he very strongly advised us to send that money back to them.
The entire $10,000?
Yes.
Is that was his recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Questions, concerns, comments, Jonathan?
No, I guess, you know, it's not the money to have, but.
Exactly, right, right.
Your brokerage's to the deck.
Okay. So we need a motion to refund $10,000 to Tokyo Marine?
$10,310.61? Okay. I motion that we refund the $10,310.61 back to Tokyo Marine that we should not have accepted. On the claim.
Right. And in effect, that renders that claim
null and void.
Null and void, nonexistent. Okay. We need support for that?
I'll support that.
Laura, support? Discussion? Additional discussion?
I guess, do we know where this claim was made, or?
There, yeah, well, it went back to the time when our clerk was Dolly Rodriguez. I don't know what.
No, no. Actually, it was Lynn Dawn. It was shortly before the 2022 election.
Okay.
Governor's race.
Okay.
And she was slammed, she didn't get it done on time. And, but they refunded the money.
Yeah, right. And it, the, so the initial charge of 99.96 and change was because the audit didn't fall within that 45 days. So according to Grace Augustine at Accident Fund, she said, we cranked that up, that non-compliance charge. It's about 30 to 50%. They want that data. And she said, we do it purposefully. And they did. It was, the audit was completed, and the refund came through, 78.22. I misspoke, it is 78.22. The difference that, so the initial claim was paid out under the surety bond. It was the maximum amount, I believe, under the insurance for what's the section referred to as clerk dishonesty. The 310.61 is interest. Again, we should not have made the claim. We should not have kept, we should not keep the money. So. Any other question, concerns?
Get the audit in on time.
Yes, yeah, get the audit in on time. Yeah, yeah, exactly. So let's do a roll call on that? Yeah, I think.
Okay, we have Sue.
Yes.
Trudy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Laura, yes.
Motion passes to refund $10,310.61 in full to Tokyo Marine HCC. Okay.
I guess if I can piggyback on that, is that going to come out of the general fund, or?
Yes, yes. That's it for old business. New business. The sewer construction bills. Steve went over those with us. Chris and I will be signing these so that we can get our contractors paid. It is for Phase One. Phase Two, I gotta typo on that. And wastewater treatment plant expansion sewer bills. Sewer One Gravity Project, $401,005.65 for the lift stations and valve vaults at Devo Beach, intersection of Constance and Arthur, and the intersection of Lake and Poplar. And then from Matt's Underground for Phase One Low Pressure System in the amount of $90,557.80 work performed to date. Installing structures and piping for the lift station in the Columbus Beach Club and the lift station at the intersection of Prospect Street and Chippewa Beach Road. And then we have pay request to Grand Travers Construction for the treatment plant expansion in the amount of $252,46, $252,46.40. It's, again, as Steve stated, focused on the placement of rebar and concrete work for the new tanks. $146,186.95 will come out of the USDA Phase One work alone. And then $105,859.45 will come out of the Eagle funding. Yep.
The Eagle is the grant.
Yes, ma'am, yes. And as I understand it, and we use loan. Now, I'm not sure if my understanding is correct on it. Help me out with this, Chris.
You use the USDA loan up before you touch the USDA grant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, okay. So do we, will someone make a motion to accept those bills and authorize them for payment? Can we do that all in one?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I move that we authorize these bills to be paid.
Okay, and do we have support?
We'll start.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Are you ready? Okay. Next item, Mead and Hunt for, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
The change orders.
Oh.
Those we have not approved.
Oh, good catch, thank you. So we.
That he had talked about up here about
Yes, ma'am.
Adding those concrete, no, that was the four to five inch.
Four to five feet.
Yeah.
Right, yep.
So I'm under the impression these concrete structures are going on those lift stations so people can't park on top of them?
So they're four to five feet around. I call them crocs. I don't know what they're made of. And they are, the grinder pumps are inside them. And then the connections, the plumbing connections and the electrical are inside there. And then there's a lid on them, and they're buried.
Okay. So we will see them above ground a little bit?
I don't think we will.
Okay.
I don't think we will.
Okay.
And you'll notice the difference when he talked about, one of the vendors had their estimate come in. It included the removal of the lids, and the other one didn't. And that was the difference in price
Okay.
that we questioned. And then the bollards are the, they're tubular, bright yellow. Keep it from backing into them, hopefully. So, yeah.
Is there also an invoice here for performance engineers?
Yes, there should be for their oversight or overseeing of the project. It should be at the very beginning, I think.
I hear it's at for $65,000.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not crazy about using the contingency, but it seems to make sense.
Yeah, I agree.
So that comes to, what, a total of $42,246 for the two contingencies?
The total net increase in cost to the contract is $18,915. And the Phase One contingency fund currently has $227,072.33. The last page before the change order has the dollar amounts at the bottom.
Yeah. Sorry.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to pay, to agree to the additions, the change orders, one and two. Sorry, I think I've been have to. And then also the invoice to performance.
Okay. So we have a motion?
But there's two.
Yeah.
This one and this one?
Yes.
Okay. Are the invoices?
Two invoices for performance engineering?
Yes. Okay.
And the two change orders?
For before that. Change order number one.
Which is for Matt's Underground.
Yep. Got it.
We should wait for Sue. So we have the two performance engineering, performance engineers invoices for their contract administration and construction oversight. And for contract administration, engineering design revisions and construction oversight, construction inspection. Total on that invoice, $65,088.93.
The end of that.
But then we also have Mead and Hunt professional services for August and September. Let's do these one at a time.
I was gonna say, were they entered into the, no, because they go for the Eagle.
Yeah, they come out of Eagle.
Okay.
Construction, correct. I don't think we have to do each one individually.
No.
No.
So the motion, we've had a motion to authorize for payment the Phase One and Two. Now, Sues, wastewater treatment plant, Sue has a motion on the table to agree to the additional two change orders and the invoices, two invoices to performance engineers.
And Mead and Hunt.
And Mead and Hunt, thank you. And for Mead and Hunt, those are professional services for the technicians at the treatment plant for August, the months of August and the months of September.
Do we have a second? Did we have a second?
Aye. Not yet.
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion?
So they just show invoices will come out of the Eagle, and then the contingency, or excuse me, the amended change orders would come out of the contingency.
Exactly, yes. Any other questions? Sue?
No.
No, you're good.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor to agree to pay, accept and pay the two change orders, the two performance engineering invoices and the two Mead and Hunt invoices? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. This is a big one. I am B. Excuse me. Mead and Hunt potential screen purchase and installation for the wastewater treatment plant. We may recall last summer, summer of '24, Mr. Kramer mentioned that the screen, if you've ever toured the wastewater treatment plant, where the solids come in, they're filtered with a big screen. And it's, it comes up, and it, the solids go one way and the liquids go the other. This has been broken for over a year. It's been being cleaned by hand. It's, it needs to be done. It's very specific to our plant. Tammy went out and toured the area wastewater treatment facilities, and the Dupron Flex Rate is particular to our machinery out there. She can buy different parts and they can be replaced versus replacing the whole screen again, which is why she recommended this screen and filter system. She did not ask for any of the additional attachments. There was a bagging system, they're handling that in a different way. The final, it is, it is $98,000. That does not include installation. Excuse me, the installation will be bid. We'll work on that, but this has to get ordered. If we approve it, it has to get ordered. It's going to take some time for it to come. Then we can work on bids for installation.
I'm not, why, why can't we get bids first?
For.
As to what, I mean, do we have an idea of what the cost would be for the installation? I understand we need it.
Yeah. No, I, no. We can, that's a good question.
How often does this need to be cleaned out?
All day. It runs pretty much continuously as the sewage comes into the plant, and it separates where it comes in. And so the liquids are going out into the tanks, the treatment tanks, and the solids are being caught here and up. And if you're looking at the estimate, it takes, it's like.
Conveyor belt?
Conveyor belt with the solids, and they drop off this chute into a bagging system. They're using a different mechanism to catch the solids.
Yeah, I guess what I'm getting at is, I guess, what's our timeline or estimated timeframe of getting this?
It's gonna be a few months.
Before it even gets here?
Before it even gets here.
Okay.
But I think we should be able to get a bid.
On installation? Yeah, yeah.
Prior to ordering.
Okay. What, what are you thinking on, well, and I don't know, a request or proposal for that?
Does she have to clean it every day?
Yeah.
Tammy would probably be able to help. I think there's one company that has done that kind, not that work, but.
Johnny Green was a company she mentioned. She mentioned Grand Travers Construction.
Grand Travers.
Yeah, and they're out there doing work. And she mentioned those two would be able to give us estimates. I would have to find one more possible. So are you thinking that we want to table this and do RFP for installation? Just to get a ballpark?
I'm just more comfortable that way, but.
I think that's fair.
Just question, do they know what clause to break? So maybe in seven, eight years, it doesn't happen again? Is there a problem with the system?
Tammy probably does. Tammy probably does. I don't, if she told me, I don't remember.
We can find out.
Yeah, we can find out.
That'd be something to look into.
Yeah.
Something for next meeting.
And if we can get those bids, we can always have a special meeting to get it approved, to get it ordered.
True. So do you want to make a motion to table this until such time as we have?
Motion to table?
Do we need to table, make a motion to table? Let's do it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table this, so can we receive bids for installation?
Okay.
And, and find out if this new system's gonna last, how long it's.
Right. Well, maybe she can come and answer some questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay.
Also for that.
Okay. And any more discussion? I guess we kind of did that backwards. Okay, all in favor to table this and gather more information, get RFPs for installation, talk to Tammy, get more information on the timeframe from order to delivery, cause of breakage, durability. Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Very good. Okay. The USIC contract, USIC is a business that we contract with for Miss Dig. We're all familiar with Miss Dig. It's been suggested that we add to the USI, USIC handles utilities, sewer lines, water lines, electrical. And if you don't call Miss Dig and you break them, it's your responsibility or the contractor, if they don't call Miss Dig. So what's been suggested by Tammy is because we are having all these new hookups coming in the phase one and sewer district, we have water, we have the original sewer line running through the commercial, we have water lines, we have electrical, we have cable, we have all sorts of things. We have, she wants us to add to the USIC contract residential sewer lines and any existing water line. Because if we don't and somebody clips it, the liability falls to the township. If we have them on our contract for USIC and I call and say I want a hookup, or my contractor calls in, they want a hookup and they, they, Miss Dig comes out and they still clip the line, it's on my contractor. It's a protection for the township. Okay? That's the concept. This would also include mapping the existing water line. So we're looking at adding phase one and phase two residential sewer lines to the mapping service and adding the existing water line at Commerce Park from the wellhouse to the treatment plant. And this is again to protect the township from any liability for any possible damage. The financial impact is up. She suggested we put a limit of five hundred dollars on there. She didn't think it would go over that to add that service to USIC. So the motion that needs to be made is to contract with USIC to add phase one, phase two residential sewer lines and the existing water line in Commerce Park to the USIC contract.
Makes perfect sense. Should have had it done.
Yeah.
Should have already done it. With everything that's already been buried.
Yeah, exactly. And she can, she's already been, she's been going to talk with performance engineers to get the, what do you, what did she refer to as ready to? This type of mapping that they have, ready? Oh shoot, I'm sorry, I can't think of the phrase. Anyway. And they'll work with her on their, they're keeping maps of their sewer lines and that would, she would use that. So motion on the table, I guess I'll make the motion to add phase one, phase two residential sewer lines and the existing water line in Commerce Park to the mapping USIC contract. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Okay. Discussion?
No, I think it's a great idea. I mean, you know, I think in the future it could be discussed, but you know, as of right now, we don't have a DPW that can respond maybe there within two minutes to, you know, kind of remedy, remedy the problem. And you know, where, who's our, where is it coming from that's gonna be fixed, so.
Right.
I think it's a, we'll spend.
I agree.
Sue?
Laura?
Oh, I would all same.
Just, have you had any other comments considering those questions?
No.
All, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That's okay. Fire Department, thank you, Chief.
So I do have a few handouts, is that okay?
Yep, absolutely.
I won't take as long, I'll take a short.
Want to handle?
Do your best, Dave.
All right, so I'm Dave Carpenter, I'm the fire chief at our local fire department. Brian Combley over here is our, our president. And Carl Poller is one of our officers and these guys help out quite a bit. For two thousand twenty-four, we responded to two hundred and four calls, up about twenty calls in two thousand twenty-three. We are one of the busiest stations in Chippewa County, probably I think the closest is about ninety runs. So we do run quite a bit, and that's not, normally we don't run any medical, you'll see on here we did assist medical, but we don't get paged out for, you know, the medical runs also. The breakdown on the sheet there, we handed out, we had fifteen gas leaks, forty-two fire alarms, and that includes everything from kitchen fires to sheds on fire to a mobile home to a pool building to a house, but it's not vehicle fires. Auto accidents, we have forty-seven response to auto accidents. You could probably ask Gordy, he'll, he'll boast that seems like our accidents are up quite a bit more than what they used to be. Assistant medical, so that's where we help out with EMS, whether it's to help out with CPR or to drive the rig or to get somebody out of a basement or, you know, that's falling in downstairs or whatever. We usually give them a hand with that. Had nine rescue on the water, CO2 and smoke detectors, we had six. Brushing grass fires, thank God we're not out in LA, we only had twenty-eight brush fires, thank God. Power lines, we had thirty-three downed power lines, one hazmat run, and then just a couple miscellaneous calls that we got canceled on. Average in route time is two minutes and forty-four seconds, so that's for somebody to acknowledge the page. Usually it's myself, it used to be two minutes and twenty-two seconds, but I'm up to two minutes and forty-four seconds. I don't know where that extra twenty seconds got in there, but I am getting older, so I do have to stop sometimes, go to the bathroom before I go out. Arrival on the scene averaged about eight minutes and twenty-four seconds. We pumped approximately four hundred thousand gallons of water last year. That's also with mutual aid, so sometimes we help out with, with that, so it's not just our department. We completed over four hundred and fifty-five man-hours of training. Each fireman now has to document, acknowledge and take minimum of twelve hours of training. Doesn't sound like a lot, but try to fit that in with your work schedule and all the fire meetings that we have. Currently we have thirty-one firemen, three are in school, and they'll be graduating in May hopefully. Just a little information here, so each fireman, this is what it costs us to equip a fireman. And we know these figures, so these are, we constantly are buying this kind of stuff, so these, these numbers are pretty accurate. But you're lacking, just, you're looking at around fifteen thousand, a little over fifteen thousand to equip a fireman when he comes on. Times that, times thirty-one, that's four hundred eighty-two thousand. Now the best thing is, National Fire Protection Agency, NFPA mandates that we replace this every ten years it expires. Our helmets expire, our gloves expire, our jackets expire, everything expires in ten years if one wants to replace it. So basically about a half a million bucks every ten years we gotta come up with. So we spread that out over a period, we don't do it all at once, obviously, okay? Our last truck we bought was four hundred twenty-one thousand, then we put about eighty thousand in ladders and hoses and, you know, all the equipment out there. In addition, our next truck will be between probably seven fifty and nine hundred thousand. Let's see here, I just had a couple other notes on here. So our next backup trucks, our, our last truck we bought was already at two thousand sixteen, and our next truck in line is twenty-five years old. Okay, so it's getting old. Today, matter of fact, we just received a backup battery jaws of life, so it's a backup system that's gonna go on our main rig, and that cost us forty-one thousand. We are getting eleven thousand six hundred dollars from the fire association for Chippewa County, so we just picked that up. We just delivered it today. Two years ago, we replaced all our self-breathing apparatus, we call them SCVAs. Those are the tanks, the masks that we put on to go into a fire, and it cost about two hundred and thirty-one thousand. Few budget items I threw in here on my notes, just our truck fuel, oh, twelve thousand dollars. Our insurance is thirty-two thousand. Turnout gear that we placed, just replacement of gear during the year is fifteen thousand. Truck maintenance and servicing, about forty thousand. Annual ladder hose and, hose and ladder inspection, seventy-five hundred bucks a year. Okay, so it's just a, it's a very expensive business to be in. I wouldn't recommend it to anybody, just won't try to open up a fire station because it's very, very expensive to maintain and, you know, keep ahead of it and stuff.
Yeah. Well, but what's the cost without it? What's the cost, what's the value of a life?
Put a value on it, you can't, there, you know, I mean, that's, you know, we can replace that garage, but that little boy that's in the Indian River that drowned or whatever, we can replace him.
Right.
Well, if anybody had any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, item D is the fire department contract. It expired, it's a, it's a calendar year contract. It did expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. The current contract will be for two thousand twenty-five. It is approximately, it is approximately a nine percent, just under nine percent increase. You can see up in two thousand twenty-four, two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, seven hundred eighty-four dollars. The two thousand twenty-five contract is three hundred eight thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. So the discussion is to review the contract and discuss the contract.
It looks like the same contract that we've had for years.
Yeah.
And we see the dates change and the dollar amount, which is understandable.
Yep. And Chief, you explained to me that with this contract, there is a primary, how did you phrase it? That if, if, if?
Or like the additional coverage and stuff?
Yep.
So if there's something beyond our scope of what we can handle, a good example, we had that truck going through town here and it went into the river right here between the bridges. Well, we needed a crane, we don't have a crane, you know, and we gotta pick that out of the water. You know, we gotta get it out very soon because this got oil and gas and stuff in there. That's beyond our scope of what we can do. So what I did with that, I immediately called Mike Ridley at the time, said, hey, can I get a crane from Ram's? I don't know the cost of it yet, but we gotta get this out. And he said, yep, no problem. It still went on the guy's insurance, so they covered it, just in case their insurance didn't cover it. And I think it was around four thousand dollars to have that crane lift that truck out of there. That's where we would go to the township and, you know, try to work that out. That's what that's for.
Okay.
And we do try to, from a billing standpoint, nobody in the township ever gets billed other than, other than a contract. We find mostly on I-75, we had, well, one example is one of those cattle farmers caught fire. And we were out there for quite a few hours, number one, getting it put out, then removing, you know, so in that situation, we damaged a lot of hose because of, but anyway, we build their insurance company, you know, so. If they didn't pay that, that would not come out of the township. That's just, that's just an example of we try to, you know, when there's people that don't live in the township and it's a heavy burden on us, we will try to build their insurance company.
Okay.
I've been out forty-one years and we've never built a township in all the years. You know, it's just there in case something catastrophic, maybe a great big tire fire or something like this here. Travis City had that one over there and they were there for weeks.
Right.
Putting this out and, you know, just the five gallon bucket of the foam is a hundred and fifty-five dollars now. We would use thousands of those, you know, and so it could be, you could spend a hundred thousand in just home.
Right.
So that could really put a hurt to a, a department like ours, so.
Right. Okay. So do we want to make a motion to accept this contract?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah. So we need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. And a support for that?
I'll support that.
Okay. Discussion?
It's very straightforward. I'd like to thank you guys for everything you do.
All those in, in favor of renewing the contract with the Tusker Township Fire Department for two thousand twenty-five? Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And finally, on our agenda. Oh, that, I'm sorry, yep, thank you. Resolution for charitable gaming license. The Indian River Women's Club has asked us to, they, they're asking for us to pass a resolution, which is provided by the state of Michigan, Michigan Lottery Department Gaming Division, to recognize the Indian River Women's Club as a nonprofit organization so that they can then go out and, and get a gaming license. They, they do fundraisers for our community, they'll get two gaming licenses this year. And if you have driven from here to the fish, you'll see many things that the Indian River Women's Club has provided to our township. This doesn't cost the township anything, it allows them to fundraise that comes back into our community in beautification, in pavilions, the beautiful fish that's down there that was done with BLPA. So we need a motion to pass this resolution, it is attached. So we need a motion to pass this resolution recognizing the Indian River Women's Club as a nonprofit, allows, allowing the Indian River Women's Club to obtain raffle license from the state of Michigan, charitable gaming division, and to continue their fundraising efforts on behalf of everyone who enjoys Tusker Township.
I motion to accept, motion to accept their status as a, for a resolution for a charitable gaming license for the Indian Rivers Women's Club. Also, over the years, they've also given out scholarships for college books. I know I received one ages ago, so.
They donate to the fire department.
Yes. I, I think we'd be hard pressed to find an, an organization that hasn't benefited from, benefited from the Indian River Women's Club. Sixty years they've been active in our community, so. Support?
Support.
And further discussion?
Just out of curiosity more so, what are the? Just out of curiosity more so, what are the raffles going to entail?
Jane?
In our spring fundraiser, we're planning to raffle two, uh, baskets, if we will. Um, uh, unknown what we're going to do for our following. So initially, we have to apply and be approved as a nonprofit organization. We have a lot of proving to do in that area. And then we apply for the raffle license. But once we're approved and we have the first one, then we can, if we want one for next year, uh, we just submit, uh, additional dates, so...
To, to the state, to the gaming?
To the state, yes.
Okay.
It's all to the state.
So this is the first gate? And then from here on, once you've proven yourself to the Gaming Commission in the State of Michigan, there, you're good to go?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, comments? All in favor of passing this resolution to recognize the Indian River Women's Club as a nonprofit, allowing them to obtain raffle license or to prove themselves to the State of Michigan uh, and to continue their fundraising efforts on behalf of Tusker Township? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Unanimous. And item F?
That's right, forgot about that.
I did too. Thanks, Laurie. Okay. Jonathan, you want to take the lead on that?
Uh, so pretty sustained, uh, we had discussion, uh, last meeting about, uh, you know, bids for a more, uh, for a permanent Township attorney. Now, I just took a file motion that, uh, the board complete, uh, attorney contract bid, set, uh, a bid deadline, I guess as far as receipts of, you know, interested parties. And then I think it might be wise to create a criteria sheet, you know, as a formality of, you know, almost a resume for us to look at and be able to choose the best for Township offer experience and, uh, stuff of that nature.
Do we want to... Is, we want to set a bid deadline? Um, do you also want to have this criteria sheet in advance of the bid dead, of getting the request for proposals out? I guess that's my question is, when you say bid deadline, do you mean that you want the request for proposals to be put out there to the public? Or you want them back by a certain date?
I didn't back by a certain date.
Okay. Okay.
You know, and we can, I don't know that a, a criteria sheet would need to be submitted or created or presented, you know, prior to that. Now, I think once all the applications have been submitted, I think, then we can sit down and review and go off checklist.
Use the criteria sheet just to compare candidates?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Do you want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the board to complete. Attorney contract bid, set a reasonable deadline to receive, uh, applications and to create a legal criteria resume, I guess, sheet.
Okay. Motion on the table, do we have support for that?
Yeah, I'll second that. Can we fine tune when we want the deadline to be for people to submit their applications? So that's all in this, we don't have to come back to it again?
So we'll start by...
So we've got an amendment to this motion then? You want to... So we have a motion on the table?
But the motion says, set bid deadline.
Okay.
What about by the, the March board meeting?
March meeting?
March?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have, yeah. So, so we will have that by the March? I don't have that exact date.
I'm getting it.
So we'll have to have it like a week before, have it, we'll have to...
Okay. Gordon's going to give us that date?
March 11th.
Okay.
It's the Township Board meeting.
Okay, so we want them a week before?
March 4th.
The 4th? Okay.
That should give us enough time.
I have some things. Okay. So we're going to put out requests for proposals for, um, legal representation, uh, to be received here by March 4th. Okay? Motion on the table by Jonathan, second by Laurie. This, further discussion, questions? Do you want to spearhead writing that up or do you want help with that from the office? Okay. Did, okay, so, all right, fine. Um, all right. All in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, unanimous. Okay, good deal, like to hear that. At that, did I forget anything under new business?
Nope.
Public comments? Floor's open? Yes, sir, come on up.
Ian Nybel, I just forgot to tell you that we got our weight finding signs in, in polls for the, uh, Green Dock, the Debo Beach. What's the other one?
Boat water.
The, Marine Park, I'm sorry. So, yeah, we got those in and they'll be put up in the spring.
Very good, good deal.
I saw the invoices, so I need to...
I dropped them off for you.
Hello, my name is Patrick McGinnis. I've been witnessing on social media lately, people complaining about the cost of our police department. I consider the police department a necessary evil. It'd be nice if we didn't need them. But there's one family here in Tusker Township this past summer. The husband is still alive because the police department was there when he had a chainsaw accident. Saved his life. There was a little girl a couple of years ago swimming off Green Dock, started drowning. This man here jumped in and saved her. I'm sure that family appreciates it. A few years before that, there was an armed robbery at Patton Jerry's. Within 30 minutes, the police department captured the individual, retrieved the gun, and he was prosecuted. I'm sure the people are safer because that gun's off the street. Anyone who complains about the police department, who when they don't even know how many police officers we have, is out of touch. I think we all owe a lot of safety and gratitude to the police department for the service that they provide. Thank you.
Thank you. Floor's still open for public comment? No? Okay. Public comment is closed. Do we have board? We didn't add board comment to this agenda, okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn? May we have a motion to adjourn?
Sure do. And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 8:38. Thank you.